I'd like to call a February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen Finance Committee meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Thank you. I would move for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Manual checks in the amount of thirty thousand, ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents. A lawn credit card in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for February seventh, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents, for a total of six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
And I will second that motion. Are there any questions on the bills tonight?
None, Your Honor.
And I just had one question on the, the credit card statement. Page three of five, on the top of that page, just what the item was for the Colorado chapter of TH nine seventy, two charges for three twenty-five each.
Sandy will answer that.
Okay.
Gotta turn the mic on, that's the trick.
Okay.
Code Council, okay.
And I had no further questions, so all those in favor of the approval of claims, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Alright, is there any other business for us tonight, Mr. Weaver?
No, we're going on the shortest meeting ever.
Alright, and then next meeting, we will elect a chairman, we'll have a third Finance Committee member.
Awesome.
Alright.
That'd be great.
There's no further business than meeting adjourned.
I now call the February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilman Gard lead us in the pledge, please?
Thanks, Mayor.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the acting city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Todd Smith?
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian?
Here.
Councilman Rich Guard?
Here.
Councilman Martin Canon?
Here.
Councilman Carl Larson?
Here.
Councilwoman Mariella Christensen?
Present.
Mayor Ron Morpness?
And I am present as well. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. Approval of the agenda, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Your Honor, I will abstain from that vote, because I'm on one of the items, thank you.
Thank you. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Mr. Davis?
Jim Davis, the Riverton Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to bring attention to you a couple of things this evening. I laid at your positions the new Travel and Tourism magazine, it's put up by the Wyoming Department of Travel and Tourism. This ad was placed by the Winter Visitors Council on this page, and on this page, it was a co-op between Riverton, Lander, and Dubois, that we used tourism asset dollars of our share of Riverton of about twenty-five-hundred dollars to make it a two-page spread. So it's a real eye-grabber. And this is similar to the ad that we put in last year, it's a few minor changes, some pictures changes, and then the new logo for the lodging tax board is on there with this up here in the top corner. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Then on that same venue, I've also placed at your stations a report of the two thousand thirteen Tourism Asset Dollars Grant Program that is just now being closed out. There's three items on there that I've marked in yellow. Two of those items will probably never be funded, because one of them got canceled, and I can't seem to get the other one to respond to me. The one for the Baxter Black four-H just happened last weekend, and Malcolm informed me he would be getting me those receipts at the end of the week, so I can get that one paid. And then this grant program will be closed out, and we are now in the grant program for two thousand fourteen. And the requests are coming in right now. That program ends at the end of this month. So as you can see, the totals, we've paid out seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, and there'll be, I think, that one fourteen-dollar, or five-thousand, fifteen-hundred-dollar grant for the four-H that'll still come to add to that. We actually granted eighty-seven-thousand dollars worth of grant, and some of them didn't come in at full amounts, and, you know, because we only pay if they produce receipts, that they've actually spent the money, so, unless there's prior arrangements made where I pay the vendor directly. And there's a, you know, there's a separate board of myself and Stephen, and a couple of my board members that actually sit down and allocate these funds, and it's mostly all for advertising and promotion of the community, so, you know, we did, I bring one more attention to you, we did help the school district out with their tournaments and what have you, to the tune of, well, we actually granted them eighteen thousand dollars, but when they actually turned in receipts, they only came up with twelve thousand that they could produce, so that's all they got, so. So that helped them out big time, it really did, because they were talking about moving some of those tournaments to other communities, so I hope they stayed here because of that, so.
Absolutely.
If you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Does any council have any questions, Mr. Davis?
And for the new guys, if you do, give me a holler at the chamber, and I'll be more than glad to talk to you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Your Honor, when, when and where are applications for the tourism asset dollars?
They're at the chamber. I can email them to you. I've sent out applications to all of the responders from last year.
And when does that period close?
Twenty-eighth of this month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is, is that for the awards banquet, is that what?
No, no, this is for the tourism asset dollars. We're doing awards, we're just starting on the awards banquet.
That's what I was wondering if you were wanting to comment on that, or?
Well, yeah, we're just getting started on that. I did email out the other day that the applications are available, and there'll be some ads starting to run next week in the paper. The actual banquet is at the end of March, so we'll have a little time yet to get applications in and, and go through those and come up with some winners.
That's always a well-received and very important activity in the community that gives people an opportunity to nominate folks in the, in the community that are doing a wonderful job, and to give them a little publicity and notoriety. I've always been very supportive of that. And this is a beautiful publication, Jim.
It really is.
Good job.
Yeah, and then we've already participated in the nineteen things to do that we did last year. I don't remember exactly how many requests we got for information, I can come up with that figure for you. But I just was talking to a few of the guys here earlier. We also did a article here a couple of months ago in True West Magazine, and they have a request card that they put in their magazine. And when they do that, it gives them the opportunity of the reader to check off, you know, for more information from the different articles that are in the, in the paper, or in the magazine. And we had eighty requests for more information.
Oh, really?
We just sent out, from all over the country, you know, which was a little bit of a surprise, because I didn't, normally we haven't gotten that many, so this, you know.
Well, that's good to hear. It seems like-
And let's say, in that case, what we do is we send them a Riverton brochure. We don't send them a full visitors packet, but we send them a Riverton brochure, that's the new blue brochure that I showed you here a few months ago, so.
Well, it seems like we've been getting enough negative publicity regarding the EPA rules.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
It's kind of nice to get something positive out there and compliment you on that good job.
Okay, well, thank you.
You bet.
We'll keep, keep up the work.
Thank you again. Any other individuals that would like to speak to the council at this time? With the acting city clerk, please read the consent agenda items by title only.
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, February fourth, two thousand fourteen regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, February eleventh, two thousand fourteen council work session. Approval of the minutes, February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations, February eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance number fourteen dash zero zero two on second reading, rezoned fourteen fifteen West Monroe. Now I'll read the ordinances by title only. Proposed ordinance number fourteen dash zero zero two, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of a portion of fourteen fifteen West Monroe Avenue, city of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from BGA residential district to I one light industrial district. Ordinance number fourteen dash zero zero three, second reading, Main Street sign ordinance revision. Proposed ordinance number fourteen dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending Title seventeen zoning, Chapter seventeen point two-two signs, to revise sections seventeen point two-two point zero eight-zero, sign locations of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date. Catering permit application from Bar ten for February twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, Ducks Unlimited at the Armory from five P M. to twelve A M. A business license application for a tree trimming license for Ken Avril, Central Wyoming Tree Incorporated.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Smith?
It's a recommendation of the Finance Committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Manual checks in the amount of thirty thousand, ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents. Eland credit card in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for February seventh, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents, for a total of six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I would move to approve consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number eight is the vote on the council leadership, council president and council vice president. I guess at this time, we will mark our ballots. We're voting on the council president, Councilman Gard is currently serving in that capacity, and our council vice president was Lars, I believe.
Eric.
Eric, yes, Councilman Heiser, that's right. And so these will be new positions that we will have this evening, so if you want to go ahead and mark your ballots at this time, and then Mr. Weaver and the chief will pick them up. Oh, you're just doing them one at a time? I was trying to get this project.
Trying to move along.
Trying to speed up the meeting.
Now, if we just don't have any hanging chads, I will be all right.
Send somebody in there with them.
Did you hear that, Councilman Christensen?
I did.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you.
One other thing I might mention, we got Easter eggs today.
Oh, really?
That's coming up pretty quick, too.
They already pre-filled?
Four thousand of them are, and we'll fill the others. Got a gal that comes in, that's the worst. Vice President is a council member, Jonathan Fabian.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weaver and Chief. The next agenda item is public hearing in consideration of liquor license renewals. City Clerk's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to statutory requirements, liquor establishments must apply annually for a license to sell alcohol. The city clerk's office received thirty-two applications. Of the thirty-two, twenty-two applications were for retail liquor licenses, three were for club liquor licenses, seven were for restaurant liquor licenses. The notice of the applications have been advertised for four consecutive weeks prior to this meeting. Also, for your information, the local licensing authority must be notified if there are any changes in a retail liquor license's dispensing area. With that being said, Inga and Jacob J. Tyra, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine, have submitted a restaurant liquor license application with changes to their dispensing room due to remodeling. Therefore, the accurate dispensing room area after the remodel is a six-foot by three-foot room in the service area, rather than eleven-foot by five-foot room, as previously stated. Staff has also been notified by the Wyoming Liquor Division that the Fraternal Order of Eagles, doing business as F O E, area number three zero three six, is on sales tax hold due to delinquency of their sales tax. However, it is staff's recommendation to approve the license contingent on payment of the sales tax. The Liquor License Commission has certified all applications of being complete, and it's staff recommendation to approve the thirty-two applications.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing on liquor licenses?
Your Honor, I would move to open public hearing at this time.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign, motion carries. We are now in a public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular issue?
Seeing, seeing none, Your Honor, I would move to close an open hearing.
Second. It's been moved in second to close the public hearing, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carries. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the liquor license renewals, including the updated liquor dispensing area for Inga and Jacob J. Tyra, doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine, and with the contingency of the Fraternal Order of Eagles paying their delinquent sales tax.
Your Honor, I would move to approve all the liquor licenses with the change to Inga and Jacob Tyra doing business as Roasted Bean and Cuisine for their dispensing room, and contingent approval of the F O E application pending full payment of their sales tax.
Second.
I would second that.
It's been moved in second to approve the liquor licenses as presented with the caveats described. Is there discussion?
Your Honor, I just have to one clarification on the Inga one, that it's not in the kitchen area, it's in the service area, is that right? Okay.
Okay. It was in our pocket, that correction, as I remember.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor at this time. Is there further discussion?
Sir, I'll just make the comment, being, being new to this process, I, I got with the chief earlier today, and he answered a lot of my questions concerning the information he had put out, concerning the number of responses to the various establishments. So I got a better feeling as to what those numbers mean, and he was also able to show me the numbers from last year to twenty, twenty thousand twelve. So again, I think in the vast majority of cases, if I'm correct, then the number of calls that they've responded to has, has decreased, and in some cases, quite a, quite a bit, so I appreciate that information from the chief. And I think talking to him further, that I think he's got a good handle on the, the number of responses and what's going on at those locations, and I have no doubt that if, if he ever has a problem, or he thinks that a license, you know, has an issue, that he'll bring that to the council, so that we can, we can look at that closer.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I would share that, I, I too, when I read the report that the chief put together, he and his staff have just done an excellent job. I think it's the responsibility of the city council to the community to be aware of what's going on in that side of the equation. And a lot of times, it's easy to, you know, just not be aware of it, not ask the right questions, and just let things go. And yet, we do have a serious alcohol problem in our community, and, and so it's not an attempt to try to dig up dirt on anyone, or to, to point fingers at anybody, but we do have that responsibility, and I think the chief's done an excellent job. He's described the, the concern that the police department has in working with the liquor dealer establishments to provide a good and legal service to our community, while still staying within the guidelines that we have oversight responsibility of. So I, I found it very interesting reading, and want to compliment you again, chief, so. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor at this time regarding-
Your Honor, I still got to clarify, we have text messages going with our Jasmine, she has her, she's her expert on this, on the service area. Is it separate from the kitchen, or, okay, it's not in the same area as the kitchen? Okay. The service area apparently is the whole building, according to the Liquor Division. And so, the what? The weight station? Okay. Okay. I, I just want to make sure we're clarified, so we're not stepping on people's toes.
Okay. Are, are we okay then to move ahead with the vote? Okay. We certainly don't want to do anything illegal in this area, I'll tell you what. Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor then, to approve the liquor licenses as presented with the understanding regarding the service area. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign, mayor votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Agenda item number ten is the bid award Riverview Utility Improvement Project. Acting Public Service Director, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As part of Y dot Urban Systems Program, the city is participating with the county in reconstructing the Riverview Road and Hill Street intersection. Along this project, the city is reconstructing the sewer and water lines which run along Riverview Road. While this project was being designed and looked at future capacity for the sanitary sewer to the subdivision to the north of this area was also discussed. This subdivision is densely populated with leach fields, several people have experienced failures in their septic systems. At some point in the future, their septic systems will need to be abandoned, and a sewer main run through their neighborhood for them to tie into. Because of these issues, the sewer line across Mr. Feike's property was desirable, and a subdivision agreement was negotiated with Mr. Feike, allowing us to construct this project. The city contracted with Sage Civil Engineers to prepare plans and specifications for the Riverview Utility Improvement- for the Riverview Utility Improvement Program, Project. This project consisted of the installation of eight-inch PVC sanitary sewer across Mr. Feig's property to add capacity to the Riverview Road system. This project was advertised for bid on January twenty-sixth, February second, and February nineteenth of two thousand fourteen. Five contractors and suppliers signed up and downloaded the bid packages. Bids were received and opened on February twelfth, two thousand fourteen, with the following, with the results of High Country Construction out of Lander came in at a hundred ninety-one thousand five dollars. Patrick Construction came in from Lander, came in at a hundred forty-seven thousand forty, a hundred and seventy dollars. Jerry Bornhoff Construction out of Riverton came in at three nineteen thousand sixty dollars. And Viper Underground out of Riverton came in at one ninety-one thousand three hundred and twenty. It's the staff, the staff reviewed the results and to ensure the bids were responsive and the staff recommends that the City Council award the project to Patrick Construction in the amount of one hundred, one hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding this bid award.
Your Honor, I would move to award this bid to the little bidder, Patrick Construction, at this time.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Is there any other alternatives? At this time? At this time. I don't believe there is. Is there...?
Well, the other alternative was going to Augusta and that was, that was brought to the attention of the council of that option. It was never fully, we didn't get a full disclosure from the engineers that absolutely everything would work, but it was a possibility. At the time, the council voted to not do that and to move forward with what we have right now and that's why we put it out to bid.
I mean, this might sound dry, but I have a subdivision. I would certainly love to have the city put in my sewer. But unfortunately, they're unwilling to do that.
Yeah, Your Honor, the reason, the reason Mr. Feig was approached in the beginning was for the people that are north of Riverview, there's some fifty houses up there.
Is there an improvement district there?
No, not right now.
So, we don't know if they want to join or don't join or...?
No, we've had some that have expressed interest in hooking up to it, but no, we have not improved, we don't have a sewer district in place right now.
Is that a future plan?
If that's the desire of the people, yes. It would take a fifty-one percent vote.
And sir, I can, I was fortunate, maybe I can answer some of your thing, is that I went to the meeting and I believe it was in two thousand and ten that Mr. Urbikite had about the project. And since I live on Riverview, I went to that to, you know, find out what was going on. Because I had some of the same concerns, you know, that you're raising, you know, when I looked at the package. And at that time, going down across the Hayfield was the, was the only proposal that was shown that night. Because again, at that time, I can remember the engineer talking that the flow would not go towards Augusta. So, that's why I know that night we were showing that it was going to go down across the Hayfield. And I know you talk about the, Mr. Feig now, I guess has got that area rezoned. But if I'm not mistaken, that rezoning has only occurred in the last year. So, back in two thousand and ten, my understanding there was that night he was still concerned about his irrigation canal for the Hayfield. So, you know, sitting here tonight, I don't get the impression that in two thousand and ten that he was concerned about getting a sewer through there for his residential project. So, I think that, that process, like I said, people probably are smarter than I am, but I don't think that rezoning only occurred last year in two thousand and thirteen.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard.
Is Mr. Feig's, how are we rezoning Mr. Feig's ground if it's in the county? How did it get rezoned to something different?
Your Honor, it was platted.
It's platted through the county?
It was platted through the county, yes.
Your Honor, I have to vote against this tonight because I don't understand why we... And we've had plenty of communication from the engineer that it is a possibility to go to Augusta. It saves us a hundred thousand dollars to go to Augusta. It's in the city right of ways. I understand the confusion on this. The letter was sent out from Steve's office and I thought the numbers were highly inflated to get to Augusta. It's only three hundred and fifty feet. It's eleven foot six deep and it's an eight-inch sewer line. Same thing that would be putting through Mr. Feig's property. And so, I don't see any reason why we would spend money. We've never spent any money in the past for any other developer to run a sewer line across their property. And I spoke with a number of contractors over the years and could find none that had that opportunity afforded them. And my, my other concern is if we do this now, how do we keep from not assisting in the future? When the request is put in to help fund good ideas to run sewer lines where they would, would be nice to have them, but it sets a precedence. And so, I think it would be wise for us to go to Augusta, spend less money and put a hundred thousand dollars back in the city coffers. And that's where my vote will be tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments?
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Guard, or Fabian, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This issue has a lot of history behind it that, you know, on face value, it looks really, I don't know, I guess you could almost say shady and I don't think that it's in any way that. It's my understanding that in no way did Mr. Feig ever come to the city of Riverton and ask the city to run this sewer line. But instead, he was approached and he reluctantly... Actually, at first, he wasn't interested and ultimately, he decided that he would allow the city to put this sewer line through that area. I think that's important to remember. The other things that I think are important to remember is the fact that according to Sage Engineering, it is my understanding that while the grades might work, there is no indication that the flow will definitely work. Now, it might. And it just seems odd to me to take two steps backward at this time when we really are in the construction time period. We, I mean, we have contractors down there doing the work right now. And, you know, it only makes sense to do the work as, as the project progresses. I disagree with Councilman Guard. I do not think it will save the city a hundred thousand dollars. I think that it might save us eighty thousand if the project can be done. And as I look at our Riverton City Council goals, clear down at the bottom, right above our mission statement, is, is economic growth opportunities and Job Corps. And I see our city at a place where we are about to expand. I mean, I can't see any way that we're not going to. Job Corps will open and we will have a hundred employees. And those employees, many of them will have families and they will need homes. And to abandon running an eight-inch line in this area just seems ill-advised to me when we can increase the available flow for sewer for not only the here and now and those fifty-three homes, but all the homes that will be built in the future and probably will save ourselves having to tear up Augusta and lay a much larger sewer line in its place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to comment at this time and I apologize, Councilman Smith, but I put together a little bit of a history because I was kind of hoping that we wouldn't get into this kind of a discussion, but here we are. So, it's, over a year ago, a gentleman's agreement was made between Mr. Feig and Mr. Urbikite, Public Works Director, regarding the easement for a needed sewer line in the Riverview area that will serve the Mary Drive and Henry Drive citizens north of Riverview. Those are areas that have septic systems in them now. They may, in the future, probably will, want to form a local improvement district and have a sewer line to tie into. Right now, they don't have one. And if we don't get a sewer line down there hooked onto something, we're not going to even have that opportunity. But an engineer designed the sewer line across Mr. Feig's property at the direction of Mr. Urbikite. Our Public Works Director gave the engineer that direction. Hooking onto the sewer line on Augusta Drive was not considered by the engineers, my understanding at that time. And the proposed sewer line was put out to bid and came in at a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Due to a budget crunch at the time, the council rejected this bid and project to save money. That was when the South Federal Cost Overrun came in, over five hundred thousand dollars, and we were looking for money to save. And so, we set that project aside at the time. And then, after some discussion and controversy regarding this sewer line, the issue being whether it could go to Augusta Drive and save the city money or if we should stay with the design as originally planned, it was decided by the council. The council voted on this on a split vote, three to two, and to stay with the original design after voting down a motion to table this. So, the council has looked at it and has made the conscious decision that we want to move ahead with this project as it's presented. At the next meeting, the vote to reconsider by the appropriate council members was not made. And as I don't make motions, the previous vote stood. And so, now, this brings us to this evening and we're looking at the possibility, as Councilman Fabian points out, the possibility of going to Augusta. We may, if you were to hook all the sewer lines to the north, overload that Augusta sewer line and would have to expand it in the future as well as losing customers in the expanded area of Mr. Feig's property. So, if they chose to put septic systems in there, we would lose those customers as well. And I don't disagree that there's potential cost savings. In a perfect world, when this opportunity was first presented to us, my first question for Ms. Welhelm was, is there any way we can go to Augusta? And she said, no, that it's my understanding that the elevations are incorrect. And we had no reason not to believe that that was the best information. And it was only after we got into it farther and the contractors are down there putting in manholes and on and on. And now, for us to come back and say, okay, we want to change those manholes so that we can go to Augusta, I just, I, and yet, we come back to the equation, well, will we be able to save a little bit of money? Yes, we probably will save a little bit of money, but, but I think the disruption and everything just is not going to be worth that expense. So, I certainly am going to be voting for this in favor of. And with that, I apologize, Councilman Smith, for interrupting.
Your Honor, I will be voting against this bid award. I think that when the split vote took place, two meetings ago, there was not the adequate information based on the project. It kind of disheartens me that some council members would think that eighty thousand dollars is chump change or a hundred thousand dollars is chump change and that we would treat the public's pocketbook different than we would treat our own. If we have the opportunity to save the citizens of Riverton, Wyoming, two thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, let alone talking about eighty thousand or a hundred thousand, then we need to slow down and try to save them that money because we wouldn't do it if it was our checkbook. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I would like to clarify a few things. Number one, we are throwing around this number of a hundred thousand dollars. And correct me if I'm wrong, this was an estimate done at City Hall by city staff and, and I respect their numbers and, but, the actual cost, has it been determined through Sage Engineering? Has the engineering company been hired to go down there and tell us that this can be done? And, and I would like to, I would like to bring up that there are other projects that have been done in this city that could have saved the citizens of Riverton a lot of money. I will not bring those up because they are sitting down by the river doing nothing. But I think we need to let the citizens know there's not been an official determination by any engineering company that that hundred thousand dollar amount is correct. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody could answer that, I'd sure appreciate it.
Mr. Weaver?
Your Honor, I'll try to answer that. Yeah, that's true. And the fact of what the engineer told us was based on the information he had and he wouldn't know some of these things until he actually designed it. And so, we were using those numbers as a basis of our best guess, just like we do a lot of things. But we don't, we don't know the, the actual numbers or if they would work.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. I appreciate that.
Yes, Councilman Guard.
Mr. Weaver, did or did not the engineer say that the possibility that Augusta was a viable possibility?
Yes.
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Mr. Weaver, did he not also suggest that flow might be an issue into an eight-inch line? And if we decide to abandon the current design, we could, in fact, run into a situation where we pay an engineer to engineer to Augusta who then comes to the conclusion that the flow will not be adequate or that the flow will be adequate for now and when we then add more homes to this city, it will no longer be adequate.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Christensen.
I just want to add one other thing in agreement with your statement that Mr. Feig had an agreement with the city. We can, he's followed what he was supposed to. He's given the city easements. He's done whatever he was supposed to. I don't understand how the city can do business this way by turning down all these bids. I don't think this has ever happened in the history of Riverton where a job was halted by the council turning down all the bids, voting against all the bids. That is not a good way for this city to do business, for the citizens. Because the only thing that's going to do is allow or show these contractors that, hey, next time we put in a bid, we better make it higher. I mean, it's just not a good way to do business. Talked to a lot of people about this. They've never heard of such a thing where something would be voted down, all the bids would be voted down to stop a project. And I think Mr. Feig has held up his end of the bargain and I will be voting for this pro, this bid to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Christensen. I think this, out of the whole discussion, is the, the question that I have and that I struggle with the most. You know, is Mr. Urbikite, due to illness, is not here to be able to tell us why that August, Augusta line wasn't considered more thoroughly. And perhaps it was, and we just don't know that answer. I just, I don't know. And I think that's what is the most troubling to me. But as part of that, he did have an... part of that, he did have an agreement with Mr. Feike on behalf of the city, and I feel a certain obligation to try to live up to those kinds of agreements, even though we don't have something in writing. I wish we did. But, but to me, that's the most troubling of this, this whole thing. You know, there's that unknown aspect of it, and then we've got contractors down there right now that are, are working on the project, and here we are, trying to figure out if we're going to pay for it. So, anyway. Any other comments? Anyone would like to make?
Your Honor, in your own clarification, in your own clarification, three months ago, the council voted unanimously, seven-man panel, to reject because of cost, and we found money some magic spot since then?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, I just want to-
With the budget adjustment that we just had, it's my understanding we now have $175,000 that we put in through the budget adjustment to cover the cost of this, this work.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commentary? Okay, let's go ahead and have the vote on it, then. We have a motion in a second to approve this bid award as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
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 Okay. Let's have a roll call vote, just so that we get certain on it, if you would. Acting City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Councilman Todd Smith?
No.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich Guard?
No.
Councilman Martin Canaan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson?
No.
Mayor Ron Warpness?
And the mayor votes yes. Okay, the motion passes. Agenda item number 11, consideration of 1% committee force recommendation advertised to bid miscellaneous concrete repair project schedules one and two. Acting Public Services Director, report please.
Yes, Your Honor. The Fixer-Road Citizens Committee requested staff provide them with a list of streets that they, that were in disrepair. The staff developed a spreadsheet which listed estimated treatments such as concrete works, crack sealing, spot repairs, overlays, and reconstruction. This list, after it was presented to the force committee, was sorted to show only the streets where concrete work would benefit the subgrade below the street and allow the street to last longer. The force committee contracted with Enberg Miller Engineers to design the miscellaneous concrete repair project. The sorted list was given to the consultant as the streets which would be included in the project. After the force reviewed the preliminary plans and the engineer's cost estimate, it was decided to break the concrete project up by traffic count. The Schedule I consists of roads with traffic counts over 3,000. Schedule II consists of roads with a traffic count of 1,000 to 3,000, and Schedule III consists of the rest of the roads. The new plans were developed and the engineer's cost estimate was revised. The force is formally requesting that the advertising for bid schedules one and two of the miscellaneous concrete repair project. The original project was over 16.5 million, or 16.5 miles of city streets. After they prepared the budget, it was, the entire street project was like 3.3 million. When we broke it down, schedules one and two come in just under 1 million. Schedule III unfortunately is still like 2.2 million. We had tried to advertise this bid before. It was council's recommendation to wait until we had the money from the one cent in the city coffers. We now currently have approximately, we currently have the $967,000 after the obligations that the force committee's already put out left over for this project. And like I said, it's estimated upcoming at $921,015.
Okay, thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding consideration of 1% committee recommendation.
Your Honor, I would move that the City Council approve advertising for bid schedules one and two of the miscellaneous concrete repair project as recommended by the force committee.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? I guess the only comment that I would like to make is that we've got a lot of roads in town that don't have near the traffic that these numbers, you know, would, and yet, they're roads that we have responsibility to try to repair. So I hope there's some fudge factor in there that we can, you know, look at roads also that, that really need to be repaired, even though they may not have quite as much traffic on them, so that they can get their share of the 1% money as well. So, but-
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
Just a quick question for my own benefit. When, when you say traffic count over 3,000, is that per day, per month? What, what's the-
Your Honor, that's 3,000 cars per day.
Cars per day, wow, all right. Thank you.
Busy streets.
A lot of cars.
That's, that's why lemonade stands do some well on some of our streets. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Okay, public hearing and first reading on ordinance number 14-004, 2012 ICC Code adoption. Community Development Directors' report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The City of Riverton is currently operating under the 2006 International Code Council codes, and also the National Electrical Code of the 2008 edition. The state of Wyoming has adopted the 2012 I codes and has recently adopted the 2014 NEC. And the Community Development Department does make an effort to remain consistent with the current codes as adopted by the state of Wyoming. The State of Wyoming Department of Fire Prevention and Electrical Safety has sent us a letter reminding us that we do need to adopt the new codes, and we need these new codes in order to stay with our home rule. I was going to give just a little bit of background on the purpose of building codes, because I know some people didn't, didn't quite understand some of those. Building code is intended to be adopted as a legally enforceable document to safeguard health, safety, property, and public welfare. Then, the building official and, and staff have the responsibility to establish that homes in which the citizens live and the buildings in which they work are designed and constructed, constructed to be structurally stable, and with adequate means of egress, lighting, and ventilation, and also to provide a minimum acceptable level of protection to life and property from fire. Building codes actually were, are not a product of modern civilization, and they evolved from the past mostly for the purpose that they're, that they are today. And they have been that way for actually 4,000 years. The first code written did not give exact requirements of how you were supposed to build, but they rather, they assessed penalties if the buildings were not properly constructed. Their earliest code that they found written, the ultimate penalty for unsafe construction was death of the builder. So they were a little stricter than we are today. The United States enacted the first set of building code regulations because of widespread loss of property by fire in the latter part of the 19th century. And I remember reading one of the first codes that they came up with was back east, where they said that chimneys were no longer allowed to be built out of wood. I thought that seemed like just a common sense, but evidently, people did build them out of wood. The ICC codes, which we are adopting, are called, what they're called is a model code, and they are means for setting regulations that provide the means for exercising reasonable control over construction, and they are available for adoption by cities and counties, states and countries, with changes that we can make, which would be desirable for, for our local needs or legal needs. With the advent of these new codes, it has made it possible that we can control construction in communities that were, well, previously, there was not enough money for communities to set up these new codes, because it's very expensive to come up with codes. And so, the International Code Council Organization came forward and through a consolidation of several other codes in the United States, organizations. There's the BOKA, and the ICBO, and the SBCCI, and also the International Code Council Incorporated. Those all came together and formed in 2000, the ICC codes. And so, these codes, they call them the international codes, and it's mostly the international codes, because there are other countries that have adopted these codes now. And, and you can make amendments to them, and not utilize the whole code, and they are not law until we adopt them. And so, we, we went to the, our Construction Board of Appeals members, and we met several times and discussed in great detail changes from the current codes that we have adopted right now, which is the 2006 I codes, and to the 2012 codes. There's several amendments to these codes that have been included in the ordinance adopting these codes. One of the major items that is basically being amended out of the codes, which is a requirement for an automatic fire sprinkler system in residential construction. And we have deleted that section entirely from these codes, and, and, which means we basically are not going to utilize that code, which required sprinkler systems in all residential dwellings. Most of the other municipalities in the state also did not adopt that part of the code. You'll notice in the ordinance that there's several other items that staff and the Construction Board of Appeals felt would be better to amend or delete before adoption. At the same time, the new 2014 National Electrico, Electrical Code was also discussed with our, one of our board members, Terry Betts, who is an electrical contractor. The Board of Appeals members felt it was a good idea to adopt this code at the same time, since the state has actually already adopted this on the first of this year, and we will be required to adopt it in 2014 in order to, or in July of this year, in order to maintain our home rule. The other thing we have scheduled, our quarterly contractors' workshop for February 25th, and we'll be going over the changes and amendments in the 2012 codes. And so, if there are further amendments to these codes that contractors would like to see, they can be addressed prior to the second and third readings of this ordinance. We will also notify all of our contractors of the changes in these, the proposed code changes. There's just some costs associated with this ordinance, and that's the cost of the books. The books are rather expensive. What we do is we order in books that contractors can purchase for, from us, and we sell those to the contractors at our cost. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just out of curiosity, while we're here, can you tell us who the trades are that are on the Board of Appeals, just so the public can know that this isn't some group of people that don't know what they're talking about? I mean, we've got a wonderful board.
Yes, we do. We actually do. I will try to remember, maybe with the help of my staff that I brought here tonight. We have an electrical contractor, we have a mechanical contractor. See, our electrical contractor is Terry Betts, mechanical is Eric Raymond. Our plumbing contractor is Gary Fister, I'm trying to say the wrong name. We have Gary Burnett as a designer. We have John Dedmore, who is in construction. We have Bill Davis, who is a newer member, is also knowledgeable in construction. Who've I left out?
Dave Leto.
Dave Leto, thank you very much. And Rich Guard has been our liaison from the City Council. And we met several times. They are very knowledgeable in, in construction and in all the codes, because they've helped us as we've gone along and made amendments to these codes.
I've sat in on a couple of those meetings, and they go through the code with a fine-toothed comb, I'll tell you what. And if you enjoy minutia, well, that's a good place for you. But they really do take it serious and are just doing an excellent job. So I feel very comfortable with their recommendations that they're making this evening. Thank you very much, Sandy. Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion for a public hearing at this time regarding this ordinance adoption.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to approve ordinance number 14-004.
For a public hearing.
We need a public hearing first.
Oh, excuse me. I'll back that up. For a public hearing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. I now declare that we are in a public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding this ordinance change?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'd move to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. We are now out of public hearing.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Excuse me, please. I forgot, I, we have one area on this ordinance that I would like to amend prior to your vote. On number seven, there is a, on page two, on number seven, it says Section 1102.4.1.2, testing. We, we actually did not adopt this whole Chapter 11, so that is not required to be in there. That was when we were going to have an energy code, and we, at this point in time, we decided we needed a little more work on that prior to that. So I'd like this to adopt that ordinance, removing number seven.
You're, you're wanting to leave that in the ordinance, then?
I would like to remove item seven, which says Section 11.02.4.1.2, testing. It says delete it in entirety, but we just need to delete that whole item.
Just, okay. You ready for a motion? Would the Acting City Clerk please read ordinance number 14-004 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 14-004, An Ordinance Amending Title 15 Buildings and Construction Codes to Revise Chapter 15.04 of the Riverton Municipal Code and Repealing All Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict therewith and Providing for an Effective Date.
The Chair would entertain a motion regarding proposed ordinance number 14-004.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to pass ordinance number 14-004 with the exception of the exclusion, total removal of item seven from that, amend that ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 14-004 with the exception of item number seven, Section 1102.4.1.1.2, testing. Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Agenda item number 13, Committee Assignments. City Administrators, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Usually, in January, we approve these committees, but since we've had a change-up in the council, we've finally get around to do this in February. The city currently has 12 committees, and council members serve on roughly one to three. The following committees that we have are Finance, Airport, School District 25, Recreation Board, Boards of, Board of Appeal, Senior Center Endowment, which is the chairman of the Finance Committee, PAWS, Leadership Council, Volunteers of America, Chamber of Commerce, Fremont County Alcohol, I mean Fremont County Association of Governments, Solutions Committee and Fremont County Prevention Coalition, the Force 1% Committee, and the Parks and Trails Master Plan Committee. Some of these committees are city-sponsored, and others are external, in which the city doesn't have control over the meetings. A few things to point out from the committee assignments from last year. We did eliminate the Job Corps. We didn't feel like that was needed anymore. The Force 1% Committee was added, and the city's Park Committee has changed to the Parks and Trails Master Plan Committee. In addition, the Fremont County Prevention Coalition was added to the Solutions Committee assignment. Also, any of the council members that want to go to any of these meetings, feel free to do that. Just because you're on that board doesn't mean that you have to- Um, just because you're on that board doesn't mean that you have to stay with that board. You can go to other ones. We do caution that if you see there's four council members there, then we need to step down, because then it's, it, it's declared a quorum, so. And then, uh, the senior center endowment committee is assigned to the chairman of the finance committee, and that, that will be determined at our next finance committee when they elect a chairman. And that's a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the council committee assignments.
Your honor, I would move to approve the council committee assignments at this time.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Okay, uh, we polled the, uh, council, and hopefully we got most everybody where they were, um, desirous to be. Um, it's been fairly balanced and whatnot, so, um, as Mr. Weaver indicated, if there's conflicts later on or problems or something, well, those can be adjusted later on. But I really appreciate everyone serving on those committees, and, um, they seem to be a dynamic thing that's changing a little bit as the year goes on, but, um, we've got some good boards and a lot of, a lot of good volunteers, so, thank you. Um, okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Mayor votes aye. Motion passed. Okay, reports and comments. Council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Um, council member Smith, would you lead off?
Nothing further tonight, your honor.
Okay, council member Fabian.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of things. The first is the PAWS board's official meeting is supposed to be tomorrow night, and I do think it's occurring, although I haven't heard for sure, so I intend to be there. Um, they have begun their meetings for the PAWS and Pearls, which is one of their major fundraisers that they do every year. And, uh, so I guess, uh, if you are interested in assisting with that fundraiser, either as a business or individual who's willing to either be a financial sponsor or, um, possibly provide items for the live or silent auction portion, um, that would be greatly appreciated. You can contact any of the PAWS board members, and, uh, their president is actually Kathy Hooper, and she can be reached at Hooper Law Office. Um, I won't steal Rich's thunder. I know he was going to talk about the, uh, the recreation board. No, that's fine. The school district recreation board did meet, and we have, uh, made a decision on approving quite a lot of money, and I'll let him go into the detail on that. And the final thing I'd like to do is, um, I normally don't read statements, but I want to be very clear with what I'm about to say, so, um, I'd like to just read a quick statement at this time. I am troubled by the outcome of the appointment to the vacant Ward III seat. I am not frustrated with the new councilman. In fact, I believe that he will do a fine job. Instead, my uneasiness comes from the fact that Lars Baker was not reseated. Ultimately, only four councilmen and the mayor were party to that vote, and I find it disheartening that three of these five people felt it was appropriate to subvert the vote of the electorate, especially when that vote was only three months old, based on a technicality that forced Lars to vacate his position. One would think that legislative bodies in Wyoming would be extremely sensitive to ensuring their constituents' votes are honored, especially in the wake of the Cindy Hill issue. But instead, this council has willfully disregarded the wishes of the voters in Ward III. I have been approached by many citizens that have expressed their distaste with what happened, and I take comfort in the fact that I voted to retain Councilman Baker and honor their vote. While I'm certain there are members of this council that think replacing Lars was in the best interest of the city, I am certain that the public at large, when given the opportunity, will remind this council that we are elected for the people and by the people, which means that we work for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Guard.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I have, um, passed out to all the council members the rec board, um, requests for funds and who was, who was funded and who was not. And, um, there was very few non-funding on the, on it. Um, you can go through there at your leisure and see those, um, totals, which, uh, the funding was at 210,000, 239,05. Um, there was, um, a lot of really good applications, and, um, that's a lot of money put into the rec system. And so I would, I would approve, uh, any input that you might have back to us of if those funds were adequately put in the right place, in your opinions. Um, I did see the email today that I scanned off my computer that, um, maybe the county commissioners don't agree with interstructure as we do. Thought it was kind of interesting. Then the last thing that, um, I wanted to bring to attention was, two weeks ago, I, I turned in a letter from the bar association of 13, um, points that they had on why not to, um, continue with, um, a demerit system, a point system. And I thought those were good, um, answers, and you can see the response from the, uh, prevention people. They responded in red, so that you can read those and understand those to the best of your ability. And, um, I'd appreciate your, take a look at those and see if there's a way that some of those, that information might be able to come back to us and, um, help us with our, our, uh, problems that we have here in Riverton. Other than that, I would like to also voice my support to the, uh, code, uh, board of appeals, the members on the board of appeals and the city staff. They do a wonderful job there, and I appreciate the efforts that they put forth. That's hard work and difficult. Even if they don't put the builders to death, there's still a lot of problems there, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councilman Cannon.
Uh, nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, councilman Christensen, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, your honor. I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, acknowledge, uh, the passing of a local businessman that, uh, was very beneficial to the city of Riverton and Fremont County, and that would be Wayne Majors. Uh, he was a, uh, he loved Fremont County and he loved Riverton. He said that many, many times to me, so I, uh, he will be sadly missed by a lot of folks in this area, so just wanted to take a moment to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, councilman Christensen. Mr. Larson, councilman Larson.
I just want to say thanks to the staff for providing me with reading material into the hereafter. And, uh, I will try and catch up and be current with it. Thank you very much for your effort.
Thank you. City administrators' report, please.
Yeah, just a reminder of the council goal retreat we have on March 3rd, and that's at, uh, CWC Intertribal Center from 6 to 8. Um, second thing is the, um, had a call from Mr. John Schumacher. Uh, he's kind of well-known in the community for knowing, um, Indian law, and, uh, he has offered his services to come either informally or to a council meeting and talk about the EPA decision and what some of the ramifications he feels are, and answer any questions. And before doing that, I wanted to make sure that the council felt comfortable in doing that. If you feel that should be more of an informal meeting, not at a council meeting, and anybody can come, or in a work session, um, really up to you how, how you want to deal with that. But I just wanted to get some direction so I can call him back and let him know yea or nay, or, or what we'd like him to do.
Council, have any observations?
Your honor, um, I met with him at a citizen's request, and Mr. Weaver met with me. Um, you know, sensible, sensible fellow. I, I think that, um, there's a lot of communication that is incorrect, that he might be able to, um, help people put at ease. Um, whatever side you're on that side is a, is a difficult conversation, and so, um, whatever we could do to get education would be a wise move, in my opinion. Um, he, uh, he was the one that suggested that we look at that book in a nutshell, and, uh, I think that there's some, some obvious things that we could do there. I do notice and, and appreciate the email that we got today that, uh, the state of Wyoming has proceeded and filed, uh, for its, uh, motion there. And so I think we need to take all of those aspects into, into our information so we can make an intelligent decision and, um, understand the ramifications of what might happen to the citizenry. So, um, if he's, if he's got permission to do that, I would suggest that it's been, be in some kind of open meeting. Would need to be advertised correct so more than four of us could show up.
That's right.
So, um, you know, maybe we could work into his schedule, and, um, if you don't want to come, we surely wouldn't have to, but if you wanted to hear what he might suggest, it, it might be useful to you.
Any other comments?
I agree.
It would seem to me that probably a work session would be the best, um, uh, rather than a regular session. Um, I think at a regular session, where we may be expected to make some, take some action or something, and I would not want to, uh, get ourselves in that kind of a position. But, um, I would certainly be open to hearing what he has to say. Uh, I know in the Casper, or in the Riverton paper this Sunday, uh, there was a full-page ad that the tribes have put in, the Northern Rappahoe tribes have put in, and one of the articles is talking about how it will affect our community, and it says, "As far as the city is concerned, it will have some changes." Well, that's pretty nonspecific about what, you know, but it will have some, and they're assuring us. And, uh, so I think anything we can do to, um, inform ourselves and, uh, be better informed would certainly be a step in the right direction, so.
Your honor, just for clarification, that was a Shoshone, uh, tribal council letter. It was quite interesting and, and a lot, a lot of expense, you know, to put it in the, in the paper. And so, um, I think there's a lot of value to getting education on the subject.
I agree. Thank you for that correction. I, okay, um, as far as, is that all you need then, Stephen? Okay. Um, I, I support what, uh, councilman Christensen was saying regarding the passing of Wayne Major, uh, just reading that in the paper. He's been a, a longtime friend and, uh, personally as well as to the community, and he certainly will be missed. Uh, Wayne was a neat guy, and I enjoyed, uh, having coffee with him, and, and he had a wonderful sense of humor, and, uh, he was always up for a joke, so, uh, I enjoyed joining Wayne a lot, and we'll miss him. Um, I really don't have anything else. Um, uh, just, um, kind of going forward, I, I too shared your, um, interest in the response from the county commissioners. I thought that was interesting, uh, their spin on that, so, um, having to do with the 1% monies and how it could be used, um, I just personally felt very strongly that if we're not careful, we'll lose that funding the next time it comes up, and, um, so, um... I guess with that, I don't have anything else. We don't need an executive session this evening? No? Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.